Okay, moving on to regular agenda items thirteen and fourteen. Item thirteen is the Ironwood, also known as the Ninety-Second Street rezoning, minor general amendment and rezoning. The presenter is Jeff Barnes, senior planner. Did you?
Yeah.
Councilmember Millhaven.
As I understand it, the applicant's put forward a request to continue this item, and I wondered if we would perhaps take that vote before we heard the staff presentation. So I'd like to make a motion to continue this item.
Councilmember Janik?
I'd like to speak.
We just, we have a motion, but I don't think there's a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have motion and a second to continue. We will now discuss the motion, and Councilwoman Janik.
Thank you, Mayor. I have serious objections to continuance on Ninety-Second and Ironwood project. Number one, you've had ample time to obtain approval from the McCormick Ranch HOA. They're firmly against the project as it now stands. The Scottsdale Ranch HOA is also against it, as they are profoundly affected by it in terms of traffic. Number two, I question the traffic study that was submitted. What assumptions were made to justify the position that a medical building would generate substantially more traffic? Was your model based on a four-story building? Medical offices generally are two stories, not four. Did you assume 100% occupancy with providers seeing four patients per hour for eight hours a day? Again, not an acceptable assumption. Many offices are used only part-time. Did you consider the traffic has spread throughout the day? Additionally, and this is extremely important, a review of traffic and accident rates shows this area is one of the busiest in the cities with a high rate of accidents. Moreover, in the recommendations to present it at the TAP meeting tonight, the transportation meeting, it is clearly stated that Shea Boulevard between the 101 and Ninety-Sixth Street is at or over capacity. Additionally, the presentation tonight will state that Mountain View Road should be expanded from three lanes to five lanes between Ninety-Second and Ninety-Sixth Street. This is in opposition to what the traffic report said. Number three, your plan includes change in zoning for adjacent property you do not own to accommodate additional density. I object to this backdoor maneuvering. Number four, you have been very deceptive in your comments on the McCormick Ranch HOA. I was told repeatedly at my meetings that I was really questioning this project and not in favor of it, and yet you told the people of the HOA that all the council members supported it. You do not speak for me. This is not acceptable. Number five, the Kern Shopping Center has robust activity and has done well with the Kern situation on this land, unlike Green Belt Eighty-Eight, which was facing the shutdown of two big box stores. And finally, number six, and most important, the residents who live in this area are strongly against the project. I represent the citizens. They are the ones who elected me. Thank you.
Okay, I also see a request from Councilwoman Littlefield and Councilmember Durham.
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be supporting a continuance this evening. Ever since this project was proposed months ago, the neighbors who would be most impacted by it have made it crystal clear that they are opposed to it. And judging from our mail over the last few days, they still are. Not only are they opposed to this particular project, they are worried about the precedence it sets for future dense development projects along Shea Corridor. Even, as Councilwoman Betty Janik said, our traffic experts are now telling us that in this area Shea Boulevard is either at or above capacity. Much of the land that this development sits on is a part of the McCormick Ranch. McCormick Ranch has ordinances and restrictions on what can and cannot be built on its land. You can go to their board and request approval or variance and build something different or more, but you need the board's approval to do it. This developer does not have that approval. He has never had it. He is basically asking us for our approval in order to continue to pressure McCormick Ranch HOA Board to give their approval and override our current no vote or to a yes. In other words, we are being used as a lever to try to further pressure McCormick Ranch HOA Board to act against their own rules and what they see as their own best interests. Not only do we not have the right to do that, it is unethical for us to even try. We should be upholding their rules, not trying to help a developer override them. I was sent as a part of the deed restrictions that McCormick Ranch has regarding this portion of land. Two, actually, four pertinent parts, I'm going to read to you. This is what they're looking at. "Without the prior written authorization and approval of the declarant, the property shall not be further subdivided except by the declarant, and no portion less than all of such property or any easement of the interest therein shall be conveyed by the owner or other declarant." Next, and this one is important. "No portion of the property shall be used for any purpose other than offices, service industries, commercial, or light industrial uses, which do not cause smoke, soot, dust, fumes, or other gases, noise, or vibration to be exhausted and emitted into the air beyond the premises where such is located. Prohibited uses: residential." Period. "Except for occupancy by a caretaker or operator employed on the premises together with his or her family." Next, and final. "Change in intended use or business. No portion of the property may be developed or redeveloped otherwise than in accordance with its original intended use and for its original intended businesses without the prior written authorization and approval of the declarant." They have to have the HOA's approval, and they do not have it. They're using us to try to lever that. I resent that, frankly. They have known they've needed this for a long time. I have spoken to the HOA president several times, and she has told me that they do not approve this use of their land. It simply is against the regulations and the ordinance of what can be built there. She also told me they have badgered her, the board, and their volunteers to a point that is well beyond reasonable. I think this continuance request is a very obvious attempt to use this counsel as a lever to further force the HOA Board to approve this use against their own best judgment. And I, for one, will not use this counsel position in such a manner. It's just not right. They should have obtained the HOA permission before this ever came to counsel. And if the HOA Board says no, that should be the end of it. The fact that permission was not given and has been strongly fought by the board means the HOA believes this is an inappropriate use under the McCormick Ranch rules, and I have to agree. Using this counsel by asking us for more time to try to pressure the board to vote for more, for something they do not believe is in the best interest of their HOA or of their residents is not how we should be conducting business up here, and I will not vote for this.
Next, we have Councilmember Durham and then Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. In getting ready for this meeting, I was prepared to vote for the continuance because I think the applicant in any project is always entitled to give us their best shot and to improve the project in response to citizen input. And we've had several projects which have been improved over time with citizen input. But in getting ready for the meeting, I was a bit shocked to see that there is no development agreement associated with this project. We have received a number of promises from the applicant regarding the operation of the facility, particularly in regard to workforce housing and housing for nurses and housing for people at Honor Health and so on. But without a development agreement, those are meaningless. The promises that have been made to us are meaningless. And recently, our practice has been to develop some very robust development agreements which, where we attempt to strengthen and record the promises and conditions that have been made to us. So I was frankly shocked to see that there was not a development agreement here. And I'd be happy for Mr. Jones to address that, if he could explain that. But I, and this also relates to the McCormick Ranch issue, because any development agreement, I would think, would provide that the project does not go forward without the agreement of McCormick Ranch. So that's certainly one thing which I think should feature prominently in a development agreement. And since we don't have one, you know, I do question the appropriateness of presenting this project without the necessary conditions that have been necessary to go forward with this project. So I'm glad to hear from Mr. Jones if he'd like to address it.
No, we're not ready to hear that.
Okay.
I just want to vote on the continuance or not, and any other explanation will be through the full presentation if the motion fails. At this point, I'll give the floor to Councilwoman Whitehead, and then back to Millhaven.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm not going to repeat a lot of what my colleagues up here said. I agree with them, and I don't think 30 days is going to make a difference in my support or lack of support for the project. I oppose the continuance, and I think the best way to expedite the removal of these vacant buildings, the best way to expedite something being built that's appropriate here is to deny the continuance. Thank you.
Okay, any other remarks? Ms. Millhaven?
Thank you, I'd like to speak to my motion. Wow, where to start? Let me start with, this is my neighborhood, so I am a neighbor. And this project would put housing, which we've all heard is in, we are short on housing, and the demand for housing is astronomically increased rental rates, to the point where, because we import most of the people who work here, people are having trouble finding people to work in their businesses. So to put an apartment complex between two of the largest employers in our city, a medical office and a shopping center, seems like the most appropriate place to put needed housing. Having said that, I think some of the reasons my colleagues are not going to approve a continuation is the very reason why I think we need a continuation. This counsel should not move forward without the McCormick Ranch Property Owners Association approval of this project. It's absolutely necessary. And I don't think that they're going to be persuaded or not based on any action this body takes, because I don't think we should take any action without that approval. I have also spoken with folks at the Property Owners Association, and was my understanding, and I may have it, may not have it correctly, but my understanding was that they did approve the change of use to residential, and their concerns were about how tall the building was in certain parts of the parcel, how far back from the road it was, and that they had been very specific and very clear about what they wanted to see in terms of heights and setbacks and massings of the building, and that if the applicant were to comply with that, that it may well get an approval. So the continuance would give them the time to get that, to revise the site plan to meet the Property Owners Association. Sure, we can be critical of the applicant of, well, why didn't you listen sooner? But if at the end of the day, it's a worthwhile project that meets the requirements of the Property Owners Association, I think it meets a real critical need in our community. Folks have talked about traffic. Yes, this is, this is a busy road segment at the freeway entrance. But let me tell you, whatever gets built on the parcel that has a vacant office building and a vacant parcel is going to create more traffic in the area. And what we know is, and if you think about it intuitively, a residential use creates fewer car trips than an office use. Just think about it for a minute. I go to a doctor's office right in that area. It's a doctor, and he has three people working in his office, so that means four people are coming and going during rush hour, and he's got patients coming, appointments are anywhere from 15 minutes to 30 minutes, so he's got people coming and going all day. Compare that to an apartment of about the same size that may have one or two people living in it who may or may not be going to work. Intuitively, it's pretty clear that residential use is going to create fewer car trips than an office use. And perhaps some of the people who-
I'm asking, just speak to the continuance.
This is why I think we need to continue it, because I think the case-
You're speaking to some details, it's okay. Continue with other ration, reasons, but we're talking about the continuance.
Right. So what I'm, so, traffic. So at any rate, I understand people who are skeptical about the traffic issue, but I think that, oh, and some of the people who live here might be walking to work, which would also take some cars off the road. So I do think this project has some merit. I think we should continue to give them time to work through what the objections are, because if we can get this right, I think it'll be a valuable project for our community. So I would like to see us continue this case.
Okay. Vice Mayor Kaputti, any comments on the continuance?
Well, I feel like this is going towards having a complete presentation, so I don't want to give all my comments right now, other than to say that I, it's hard for me to imagine that this counsel wouldn't want to at least continue to hear from residents, from HOAs, from people who would have input into the project. That's what we always talk about, giving people a voice, letting them have their say. And so I was looking forward to hearing what the applicant could do, given a little more time. I'm also just going to put out there about traffic, because that does seem to be the comment that we get 99% of the time from this project. This is a really busy intersection. This is a major employment center. In fact, the largest employer in our city, Honor Health, is located there. So having busyness and vibrancy in the largest commercial corridor of our city is actually a good thing. We're a successful vibrant city, and that's what happens. And I think we're going to hear later tonight from our traffic department that, yes, during rush hour, this particular intersection does have some pressure to it. Again, busiest intersection in our city, that's what's going to happen as we grow. But the transportation department is addressing this, as Councilwoman Janik pointed out.
Excuse me, I just want to get to the city attorney. If we can just-
Trying to provide some other avenues, so we should be able to prevent some of that. I think we should have a continuance. That's my second, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Whitehead, and then we will take a vote, please.
You know, I just do want to address the apartments, and I'm not against residential. I think it has to be right-sized, but I am counting upwards of 2,000-plus apartments in the pipeline here. So we don't have a shortage of apartments, we have a shortage of entitlements where they get built. But I mean, this is based on staff reports that I have, and I haven't, I've just quickly added it up, but we have quite a few apartments in the pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, speaking to the motion on the continuance, city attorney, did you want to weigh in?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'm unsure if the applicant wants to address their request for a continuance, but as a matter of procedure, I think it would be a good idea to give them the opportunity to take some of the time that they're allotted to present their case tonight if they wanted to address the continuance request before the council votes.
Thank you, good suggestion. Now that you've heard from everyone up here, you normally have 10 minutes of presentation, so if you'd like to address some of the points on the matter of the continuance, please proceed, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Kurt Jones with Tiffany and Bosco, we're at 2525 East Camelback Road in Phoenix, 85016. Here tonight representing, if I could have the MO, that'd be great, representing Mr. Jim Rigs and Ironwood 92 Caliber, the shopping center owner, which is Westwood Financial. So with regards to the continuance, Mr. Mayor, respectfully requesting that this 10 minutes is regarding the continuance. If the continuance is denied, then I'll have 10 minutes for the presentation.
Please, whatever you use, you use 10 minutes is fine. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Try to be precise again to the continuance issue, not all.
Correct. And I see that the executive director of McCormick Ranch is here. A lot of the comments from the council with regards to McCormick Ranch, we are not using the council at all for leverage. We had assumed by the time we got to this point on February 22nd that we would have approval. The client, not being maybe the best listener to the McCormick Ranch POA, has finally realized in order to get McCormick Ranch Property Owners Association approval was to resubmit this morning everything they requested for. And so we did that, and we have an application, and I can go through the presentation if we're not going to continue tonight, and I'll show you the changes that we made, which specifically addresses each one of their items. So yes, we don't have their approval yet. We had a very constructive meeting last week. When I say "we," it was me. It was not the client who, through stories, through hearsay, obviously has not had a good relationship with the HOA. That's a personality issue, that's not an application issue. We believe the application has merits, not only for the area, McCormick Ranch, but the city and the employees and the employers around it. The item that is on the first item on the screen here, we have proposing 10% of the units. We're down to 274, I'm sorry, 73 units. We're proposing a CCNR. Councilwoman Durham, we're proposing to do it as a private restriction, a declaration against the property, whereby the property owner and the Property Management Association enforce it for 10 years. We can talk about stipulations and how that is enforced, how we come back and report how that's, how that's working, but we feel that that's four times the previous two approvals this council has approved for affordable housing, and the options that we're providing are extremely better than the two previous approvals by this council, with a free month rent, with a lead time for everyone, from a teacher, from a firefighter to a police officer, to rent these units with a free month rent. And we believe that all the workers within a mile radius of this property have that opportunity. So it's a minimum of 27. That doesn't mean we're going to max it, you know, that's the maximum. We're going to have to figure out what that max is, but that's a minimum. I don't, I have not seen any residential project come forward with something of this nature. 10 years. The previous two approvals were five years, and it's off a federal housing law. We've worked with our neighbors, and I think the stalwart of this community is to continue to work with neighbors. That's what we're asking for. We want to work with the neighbors. We've reached out to the Ironwood HOA, which is the office buildings south of us. If you recall, earlier on, they were not in favor of our proposal, this was at the planning commission meeting, they were not in favor of our proposal. They are now not in opposition of our proposal. That means all five property owners directly adjacent to this project are in favor. As one of the councilmen mentioned, two of the major employers are of those property owners. Someone mentioned traffic. 80%-ish of the employees in Scottsdale come to the city to work. So I'm assuming that the 80 percentage of the two top employers that surround our property can't speak to this issue because they're not residents of the city, and if they, and if I had people come from Gilbert, Apache Junction, or wherever they live to come speak, they wouldn't probably get the same respect of the folks that are either against the project that do live in the city. The project has three times the open space that's required of the project. Finally, unit count's down. We went from 338 units down to 273 units. Now, our issue with the McCormick Ranch POA, I think, has been a positive one. Now, they may not say it's been positive on their end. It's been a positive one for us, because what I have for a presentation this evening demonstrates a project that looks great, okay? It's going to, it meets exactly what they told us they wanted it to meet. It took us a while to get there. Good projects take time, and that's where we're at right now. And so with that, we met last Thursday, they looked eye to eye, and we said, what are you looking for? They said, it's on the previous denial letters. Someone mentioned, we do have approval. It's a little bit unorthodox. We can ask the city attorney. We technically don't need a private body's approval before we get approval from the city. This is a new thing that we're adhering to, and we're trying to get their approval, okay? And so we've been to their board, we've resubmitted an application, we have approval on the whole lot split issue that occurred on this property, and we have approval from the board on the zoning and the minor general plan amendment. Typically, at this level, you don't get into the details of designing a building and zoning. In Scottsdale, we do. And so we're there. We're designing a building with their approval and the land use. So someone mentioned that we, the land use isn't required, allowed. They've approved the land use, okay? So we're at a point where we're talking about shifting and moving, and we believe we've shifted the buildings and the site plan to address their concerns. That needs to take time for them to sit down, understand what we submitted, meet with them and talk it through. It's not a guarantee we get their approval with this latest submission, but we're at a point where we're continuing the dialogue. And so that's why we're respectfully requesting the continuance, to see if we can get the McCormick Ranch submission and their approval, so we can move to the council and whether or not they would consider the zoning, the minor general plan amendment. With that, I respectfully request a second continuance. It's what you afforded the Green Belt project with a second continuance. We are a little bit of an odd duck in that we have a, we have an HOA, they did not have an HOA, and so we have an extra, an extra process that we have to go through, which requires extra time. It's a simple ask, and I didn't realize that it would have generated, the comments it generated, but we feel we're close with regards to the McCormick Ranch case.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Catch your breath and hold on. Councilmember Millhaven?
I'll withdraw my motion so we could continue with staff presentation and to hear more of the detail from the applicant. Thank you.
So by withdrawing the motion, there's no vote on the continuance? Is that what you mean? There's a motion and a second, and I didn't hear the second, withdraw her second? But I don't see why we shouldn't vote.
I'll withdraw, if, I mean, if we're withdrawing the motion, I'm not going to, I don't want to gum up the works.
As to form, it's, we shall, we shall vote on the motion as presented, and subsequently there will be a presentation as was supposed to occur in the first place. So at this point, registered-
Mayor, can you repeat the motion?
As a point of order, you can't vote on a withdrawn motion.
Okay, excuse me, let's clarify that, and I'm just trying to say it for common senses, if you withdraw the continuance that we proceed where we should have been 30 minutes ago. So is that okay with the city attorney to withdraw the motion in a second?
Certainly, I think that's allowed, and unless somebody else wants to make a different motion, we can just move on with presentations.
Okay. I do have a discussion then. Councilwoman Janik?
I'd like to make a motion to not continue the continuance. I want to vote on it. And I don't think I said it right.
Well, by failing the continuance, we will just proceed with the presentation by the staff. The public will comment, and the applicant will, you know, we'll just proceed with the presentation as though the continuance motion did not exist. So at this point, I would, I would call our, the staff person-
Mayor?
Excuse me?
Can we vote on the motion that's on the table?
It was withdrawn, and, or unless, or you wanted a motion to not, not continue, and there was-
I want to make a motion so we can vote on it. So they withdrew it, I will resubmit it.
It's on the agenda, so obviously we will proceed with the presentation as agendized. Item number 13. And item number 13 is the case 92 Ironwood, also known as Ninety-Second Street, and a minor plan amendment and rezoning. The presenter is Jeff Barnes, senior planner. Kurt Jones will have his opportunity to present as the applicant, and we will proceed with public comment and so forth. So we are in a time machine, and you will now proceed with our, with the presentation as agendized.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jeff Barnes with the city's planning department. I'll run through this presentation with you here for the minor general plan amendment and the zoning request. I understand everybody's fairly familiar with the site, but I'm going to give us all a refresher here. This site is highlighted in yellow on the slide here, south of Shea Boulevard on the east side of Ninety-Second Street. It, it is located, I'll get a little closer view here. It is a developed site right now. There are existing commercial buildings on the north side of the site that are proposed to remain as part of the proposed redevelopment, the diagonal- It, it is located, I'll get a little closer view here. It is a developed site right now. There are existing commercial buildings on the north side of the site that are proposed to remain as part of the proposed redevelopment. The diagonal building and the, the building on the southern side of the site are proposed to be removed and replaced with new building on there. The existing site has partial PUD zoning from a previous zoning action, but that was for a smaller development site, so the, the current proposal also includes rezoning a portion of C3 PCD-zoned property and CO PCD-zoned property as well. The requests before you are laid out here, they include adopting Resolution 12279 in regards to the non-major general plan amendment from commercial to mixed-use neighborhoods on portions of the property. The second is adopting Ordinance 4521 regarding the zoning district map amendment. And then the third being the development plan that corresponds to that, that would be adopted through Resolution 12280. Getting into the general plan change visually here, a portion of the site is already mixed-use neighborhoods tied to that previous zoning action. The other portions are commercial designation currently. That general plan change would take the entire site to mixed-use neighborhoods as shown on this graphic. The existing zoning, as I mentioned, is PUD zoning in the center with, with portions of CO and C3. The request before you would take the entire site to PCD-PUD zoning in accordance, or corresponding with the development plan that's, that's been submitted and proposed. Running through some of the details of that development plan, the site, as I mentioned, the north buildings would remain in place, the diagonal and southern building removed and replaced with residential with an integrated parking garage in the center. That's reflected on the plan here. As the applicant mentioned in the discussion regarding the, the work that they're doing with the McCormick Ranch Properties, Property Owners Association, they submitted some documents to the association for review this morning. They sent those over to us and I've got, I've tried to incorporate them in here so you've got an understanding. I'm sure they'll speak to them in more detail, but to give some indication of both, as that's what's being requested of the association. So this plan lays out fairly similarly, it drops the unit count on the site down from the 285 that's in your, your current proposal, it would bring it to a 273 unit count. Part of the big change in, in what they've submitted to the association is pulling back the fourth floor of the building as it's currently proposed in the documents represented in our, in our packet to you. Further to the east of the site, so it's further away from 92nd Street, so you've got less four-story massing towards 92nd, that also lowers the, the parking garage. So on the left would be the, what's currently represented in, in your materials, on the right would be that scaled back, the hatched area being that fourth floor. Building elevations that are in the, the development plan, this is the current that you have showing that fourth floor component midway along the building, the building also stepping down towards 92nd Street. The updated draft proposal would bring that much further back into the, into the site with mostly a three-story component at that front area. These would be the east and west elevations, a little less visually telling of those changes, but, but they are reflected in here as well.
Excuse me, real quick, what is the date on those changes? Because my, my drawings and my packet shows it was 12th of December. So what is the date as shown on those drawings?
Mayor, the, these documents would be dated today.
Okay, so all the posted information is different from what the public has seen and has been on, on record in our, in my own packet even. Thank you very much, I'm just clarifying that.
Mayor, for clarity, what the public has seen is, is going to be the same as what's in your packet. What's shown here is what went to the McCormick Ranch Association in response to their design review comments, I believe this morning, and the applicant can clarify.
So that's been shuffled differently from what I have in my packet? Is that correct?
They are.
It was posted because I showed December, well, anyway, December 17th, I believe, on our information. Okay, thank you, just, just so that I know what I'm looking at, because it's totally contrary from what I've.
And that's, yeah, certainly, that's why I'm trying to put them in a, in a one after the other as well. So the renderings, just kind of wrapping up those, those elevations, this is what's in your packet, this is what went out with our staff report, this is what was received earlier today showing the, the scaled back elevation component. And the same thing looking from north to, to south here, this is what's in your packet today, this is that scaled back component with the fourth story at the east end of the Little bit of history to touch on, so this has been in our process for a little while. It went to the Development Review Board back in September of last year as part of our process for PUD proposals. The development plan goes first to the Development Review Board for their input and recommendation, which they gave a recommendation of approval, and then this moved forward to Planning Commission later that month. And the Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of 4-3. That development plan has been modified along the way to scale back some building height and, and number of units and things. And it, this proposal went to, went to the city council in, in October of last year. At that point, they were still working through some of those details and requested their first continuance from you and, and it was granted to, to allow them to keep working through those details. A little bit of information, I'm, I'm going to try not to cover all of these things, but what I wanted to show again with the understanding that there's the information we provided to you and then there's the, the information that the applicant is working through more recently with the McCormick Ranch Association, is some differences in, in the details of this. So their building height, as shown in the updated elevation exhibits would drop from 48 to 46 feet. The number of units, as I mentioned, drops from 285 to 273 and some of these other numbers balance out accordingly as, as that residential area is reduced back to, to remove some of that fourth story component. And, and as mentioned in, in your continuance discussion and, and some of the other acknowledgements by the applicant, we've received a lot of comments throughout the course of this project, both in support and in opposition. Those are included with your, with your packet and I believe you've gotten supplemental as those have been coming through as well. And that wraps up the staff presentation. The applicant, again, is, is here and has probably a lot more to tell you about where they're at in, in those updates and that process. I'll turn it over to them.
So thank you very much. And at this point, you'll have 10 minutes, then we'll go into public comment. But we do show that there are two requesting to speak in person, so please proceed, Mr. Jones.
And thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Kurt Jones with Tiffany and Bosco. We're at 2525 East Kemba Back Road in Phoenix, 85016. I'm going to vary from my 50-slide presentation on how great our project is, just to clarify some of the comments that were made during the continuance discussion and I think may make some sense. Again, Executive Director McCormick Ranch is here, she can speak to, to what they have and haven't done, have and haven't said. But I'll reiterate, in your packets, you have their approval for our lot split configurations. This is a confusing site. We are connected to a commercial center. Therefore, a commercial center being connected to our rezoning case is not that far-fetched. The previous examples of Green Belt and other examples are entirely different. This project, when we were out with the McCormick Ranch board walking the site, this again goes to that collaborative, trying to figure this out, trying to get to an approval with the board, they witnessed the jackknife truck that came out of that commercial center because there's one way in and one way out of that back of that Sprout Center. I think everybody in this community wants to see that Sprout Center succeed. That's the whole goal of this project. We're not only going to help this, this, this center succeed, we're creating a new access point for it. A signalized access point to something that hasn't already probably caused an accident with the way the trucks enter and exit this site. The issue of what the board has and hasn't approved, I'll reiterate, the lot split project, process has been approved by the board. Its letters are in your, your packet. This is a minor general plan amendment and a rezoning case. It's not a site plan approval case. Scottsdale does it to the nth degree and approves the site plans with their zoning. That's where we're at. We're at that, that final one-yard line. The McCormick Ranch Property Owners Association approved the minor general plan amendment and the rezoning. So they're all good with the land use. They're all good with the change in our general plan. They're all good with what we requested of them. They have an architectural review committee that, albeit we have, again, not adhered to everything they said, we feel we're at a point where we have. It took time. Things take time. This is a project that I think will benefit everyone in this city, not just, you know, just the developer, not just the, the, the person that's going to, you know, make the money on the deal. This is a project that benefits the two major employers in our city and we have their recommendation for approval on that. So what I'd like to do is just have the executive director come up as part of this presentation and explain what they've approved and that they're willing to work with us with this continuance, separate from the city council, to adhere to what they're asking us to do with regards to design. We feel that the design we have in our presentation meets it. We got to go through their process to figure out if that's the case. And we're asking for that 30-day continuance to get there. We think that that's what the collaborative, collaborative effort that Scottsdale enforces on us to do is what we're asking for. So with that, if you'd like, you can.
If it's part of your presentation, then he can continue, but then we will go to public comment. So it's either going to be public comment time or, well, why don't we?
And, Mr. Mayor, thank.
Which way do you want to do it? Do you want?
And I thank you, there, we're a little bit out, we're a little bit out of sorts with regards to process. My understanding is with the previous multifamily project you had approved, a lot of stuff shook around that, that day of. That's what we're doing again and I don't want to do that and that's why we're requesting the continuance. And so, so with that, we're going to respectfully request another continuance as part of our presentation. If we don't get the continuance vote, we're going to withdraw our case and work back with McCormick Ranch and start this process over. I think that's useless. I think that's a waste of everyone's time and I think it's a waste of everyone's efforts with regards to what we can produce, with regards to getting to that final acceptance. And I think that, I think that we're there and I just think we need that extra time to get there.
Okay, the, I see what you're suggesting, that you may even withdraw the case, but the motion is for continuance can only be made by us. I see Councilmember Durham wants to speak and I would consider this just to be a question phase because we do have public comment.
Yes.
So if you, if you have a question in particular about, to the applicant, that would be great, or the staff.
Yes, I have a question, Mr. Jones. Thank you, Mayor. I am a little bit hard of hearing sometimes, but I, the mayor asked a question about these latest revisions and if, if I heard the answer right, I, I think the answer was that the fourth floor had been drawn back as of this morning? All right.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Durham, the fourth floor was drawn back at our last Thursday McCormick Ranch meeting.
Yes.
The McCormick Ranch gave us specific directions. We didn't adhere to the specific direction and the specific direction was one and a half units was not on that back parcel that we're rezoning from the CO to the PUD. One and a half units, we moved everything back, it was 400 feet from 92nd Street. We cut off a lot of units to adhere to what they were giving us direction for. Because of the awkward shape of our building, we didn't go the extra mile and create jogs in our hallways and create jogs and bedroom units to get all of our units on that fourth, the fourth floor on that back parcel. So we're now 400 feet back from any fourth floor unit. Because we didn't meet it to the T, we didn't receive, we received denial. We had a step in our building, in our, in our, in our previous applications to the board. We took that away, thinking that they weren't concerned about the step, we're losing all those units on the fourth floor as we pushed them back and so we put them back in the front of the building. Well, no, they said we liked the step in the building. I get it, it looks great now, so we'd stepped the building back in our recent submitted them. One of the members had a density issue. Well, we've solved that. We've taken density off the, off the table. I think the bigger one was, was the direction was, on their specific denial letter, was including the garage, not just the fourth store, the fourth floors, including the garage, lower that. So that's below and that's in the 36-feet-three-stories world. And now we've done that. We didn't do that on Thursday and they pointed that out to us. And they pointed that out to us that it was in the letter. So that's where we're at. We've now adhered to all that. It took us some time. We didn't mean any personality issue with anyone in doing so, it just took us some time to get there. And so now we're there and we're, we're requesting that continuance to have that board look at it, review it, give us the thumbs up and thumbs down and determine whether or not we've met what their declarations say they have to meet. So that's the honest request for a continuance. That's where we're at.
Okay, so at this point, you could respond to any other questions from public comment. So I'd rather move to public comment if that includes, you know, a representative from the HOA. Now, I'd also want to differentiate between HOA rep and architect rep, committee rep at some point. So let, let's move to public comment unless there's another question.
I would just like to point out that the applicant did not use five minutes in case he wants to use it later, maybe we could give him that flexibility. He was interrupted at five minutes.
Oh, excuse me, I wasn't abruptly cutting him off. If he wants to use the time of the association for his time, it's fine with me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
And he sat down and said no, so I have no problem, I'm not cutting anybody off on that, in that respect.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that he still had five minutes if he wanted to use it.
He also had 10 full minutes on the continuance, so when that discussion happened. At this point, we want to allow public comment and that's how we'll get there. And we have two, one for Mr. Ishak.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Still Daniel Isaac, still 13530 East Onex Court. I have several prepared comments, but before I get to that, I would like to point out to the council that there's a lot of discrepancy in what's being said, what's being cited, assumption of intent, and there seems to be some misunderstanding, which is exactly why I think the developers should get the continuance. If you have updated drawings and they're still working with the HOA, I don't know why, even if you don't like the development, you wouldn't grant a continuance. But specifically. But specifically, my prepared comments were, we have a developer who has worked to create functional, attractive space for Scottsdale. It fits much of the criteria that is called out in the general plan and many of the stated wishes of the Council and the Mayor. Specifically, it is mixed-use, commercial, including retail, and residential. It actually decreases traffic based on city's experts. However, if that study is flawed, then there should be discussion of it. It is not as tall as the current zoning allows. It provides more open area and green space than are required under the current or desired zoning. It will increase customers for local retail. It provides walkable, bikeable housing for two large employers, Honor Health and CVS, the largest by far, and the fifth-largest employers in Scottsdale, as well as many other smaller businesses. It will be an improved look for the area than the existing space or a full commercial development. It does not require new infrastructure. It will not put additional strain on valley water supplies since residents are going to live somewhere in the valley anyway, and it will actually be more favorable than single-family homes. It provides more affordable housing options for Scottsdale workers, and the city's staff supports this recommendation based on hours, if not days, of analysis and work with the developer. Scottsdale has quickly moved from a development-favorable community, jumping over the NIMBY-not-in-my-backyard mindset, to what The Wall Street Journal refers to as banana, build absolutely nothing anywhere near anyone. That is not a sustainable strategy. I live off of Shea. I face the traffic from Scottsdale on Shea, between Scottsdale Road to the Elinda, on a regular basis. This won't increase it. Residential is not as bad as commercial for traffic. Please read the report. Local businesses, the lifeblood of our financials, support this project. More importantly, it provides housing options not currently available in that area. Please either approve this project or grant a continuance because process is important, and regardless of what you think about the developer, giving them an opportunity to work with the HOA is the appropriate thing to do.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mike Crocker and then Jason Alexander in person.
Yeah, Mike Crocker, 94, 19 North 87th, Scottsdale. First of all, thanks, Ms. Littlefield, and thanks, Ms. Janik, for saying the most important thing that's kind of being missed by a lot of other people up there. The citizens, we're all here, we do not want more apartments. That's all this city's turned into is apartments. Okay? I've had a nice talk with Mr. Jones before, a great guy. If they're going to propose townhomes, condos, or single-family homes there, I'm all for it. Okay? Because this city was built on pride of ownership. Okay? And I know, and the reason why it's so good is because people have skin in the game and own homes and follow rules and laws. Okay? And that's why, that's why we have the city we have today moving forward, but it seems like the agenda that wants to be moving forward wants to build all apartments. Now, with that being said, why do we have to build another apartment over there? Up in North Scottsdale, I see nothing except homes being proposed. Okay? North Scottsdale's segregated from the rest of the area. All right? Now, I know why they probably don't want apartments in their area either, and I get it. Okay? But why do we have to have all this stuff down our throat down here? It's nothing but apartments. Okay? Now, the other thing, too, is you're talking about ownership. Scottsdale is one of the top areas people want to move into, correct? Okay? So, you have people in line trying to come here and buy the homes. On my block alone, in the last year, we had five houses go up, and they all went like this. Okay? Including the last few weeks. All right? Right in the area where the apartments are. Nobody in my area wants the apartments either. So, are you listening out there? The people do not want the apartments. They want to build townhomes, condos, or ownership, we're for it. Okay? Now, if you're going to, now, if we have to reach out and we want to take care of everybody and appeal to people that don't even live here, and there's other things, too, because this city is crumbling somewhat, and I've tried to reach out to some people, and Ms. Capooty at least returned the call once to me, she probably didn't like the conversation, but at least we had a conversation. But I'd like to reach out and say some other things, too. I'm a first responder, and also, they're appealing to the nurses, the hospital workers and teachers, but in all fairness and all due respect, it's nothing but a marketing gimmick because it's not just for them, it's for everybody. You don't get what you think you want because everybody wants to live there. You get what you earn. That's how I got here, and that's how most of the other people I know got here, too. So, I hope you're listening out there and do not approve this, and yes, the traffic's could be horrendous there. And I was a first responder, and I hope, I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, that you did address the police at the beginning, but by building all these apartments, and the way it's going, real quick, I'm almost done, I suggest that you plan on doubling your budget for the police department and eventually start a housing program for all the apartments because it will be impossible for the police to police the area and all the apartments, too. Thanks for your time, and I hope you're listening. We don't want apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jason Alexander.
Jason Alexander, 9976 East Jasmine Drive. I had not actually planned on speaking tonight because I think this case is so well-known and well-defined at this point that all the pros and cons are out on the table, and you all certainly cover them. But when I heard there were only two speakers here, one in opposition, I felt compelled to speak because I am aghast at the opposition that this project has generated purely on social media. Now, the opposition expresses opinions, and that's exactly what we should be listening to, but where are the people? Where are the actual opponents with skin in the game? As many of you know, when we were opposing the Desert Discovery Center, we showed up over and over and over again. We spent years building opposition, doing research, publishing detailed opposition papers. We spent years building our case, building a legitimate PR effort, and we ultimately got 37,000 signatures opposing this project. Now, look, my hat is off to the opponents of this project for taking advantage of Nextdoor and a couple of videos, but where are the opponents? Clickbait is easy. Gratuitous videos that appeal to fear is easy. Again, my hat is off to the people who made these videos for utilizing the tools they had at their advantage, but where is the opposition? At the last open house, Mr. Riggs's team did a head count, did a straw count, I think they had sign-ins. I also did a straw count of who was there, and it was approximately 60 people in favor and 20 people against. This was in the neighborhood. Where is the opposition? We should not be driven by ridiculous social media hype. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, just to, I will call back the applicant and discuss any other points that you want to address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'd like to address the last speaker with regards to social media. I agree 100% that this has been a social media nightmare from my standpoint. I am a previous resident of McCormick Ranch. I am a previous resident of Cactus, the Cactus Corridor. I'm a current resident of Scottsdale Ranch. So, I get all three next doors still to my Nextdoor account, and I'm up late at night just listening and watching and reading these wonderfulness about how bad this is going to be for Scottsdale. I obviously don't weigh in on it, but it is, it's been mind-blowing on what is happening with regards to this project in particular. It does mention some of the other projects, and it does bring in some certain council members' names, and they sound threatening. We don't have any speakers here tonight that we asked to come because we believe we deserve a continuance. We will have speakers, just like the previous multifamily cases before you. We'll have the speakers for the businesses around there, the Nurses Association. Speakers, I think that means something with regards to what we're proposing. This case has so much merits that I'm not sure that I understand why we can't get a continuance to continue to work with the folks that are sending you this information. And so, that's all we're asking for. We're asking for it to get through the McCormick Ranch Property News Association meeting and their architectural review committee, see if we can design something that looks great. I think it looks great now. I thought it looked great when we were there Thursday, but now, I get it. They lowered the parking garage. You don't even know there's a parking garage there. The healthcare across the street has two ugly parking garages exposed, no architectural detailing, nothing. The office buildings in the area, not the greatest design. You look at our building, I think we're going to enhance this area, not only land-use wise because that's what McCormick Ranch Property News Association approved, our land use. But when we get this design approved, I think we'll be able to come back to you and show you the merits of the case to demonstrate that it's a worthy project for Scottsdale. Thank you.
And if you'll just stay up there for a second, because I did not weigh in on the continuance. Everyone else talked about it, and then Ms. Millhaven withdrew it. You know, part of the problem is, I saw the headline that said, "Ironwood asks for a continuance," and then a couple of calls came to me, and people said, "Well, I guess I don't have to show up." It's confusing. People get jerked back and forth, and the actual process is only the Council can grant a continuance. Now, what is the purpose when there is lack of preparation? When there is something that just came out this morning that I have to call out and say, you know, "I've been here 40 years, too," and we don't do that to city councils. We don't bring something forward minutes before and have incompleteness to work with. But philosophically, Kurt, you've been here a long time. You remember as a staff person, right, what the density was generally in McCormick Ranch. It was never over 20 units an acre. We could look at what the actual history of it is under the R4, R5 criteria, that you, I'm not sure if you're retired or not, you're a longtime, you know, planner. So, what you have today, because McCormick Ranch was designed in 1971, Benny Gonzalez, same architect that did this, did the layout, so what you have a clash with is you have a clash with what looks, feels, and is the McCormick Ranch identity clashing with something that requests two or three times the density that is properly deeded and that's properly within the framework of that master plan. That's why it's so awkward if you say, "Well, they'll work with us, and we're trying to meet the ends there." So, that's the clash that I deal with citywide, and I rely on general plan and high-density counts, which you were usually attuned to as a past staff member. And that's where we have both a systematic problem in not getting there and the overlay of the McCormick Ranch site plan. That's why we have enough dental shops and retail in those clusters within McCormick Ranch. And to eat into that is a hindrance to that plan that they wrote, and then the next hindrance is how we handle the general plan. So, that's my first comment about why this incompleteness, and I don't know that you'll ever get there because what's happening is, it started way up there at 338 units and then has come down. So, I'm mentioning that because it's not something that we can professionally, say it's professionally presented so that we can answer it either now or even 30 days ago. The plan I have in my hands was from September of 17th, 9/17, right? Then you got a continuance, and these changes, and when they even mentioned DR Board approved it, or Planning Commission approved it, that was a different plan and a different count and different such and such. And that's really not fair to say, "Well, they approved this one at that time," and maybe you should start over because it is really where the problem is in terms of asking us to do something on the fly, because I have no guarantee, again, that in 30 days you're going to say, "Well, this is incomplete, that's incomplete, or yes, we finally gave on it." Now, I had to respond to the continuance question because I'm not in favor of continuance, I'll tell you that right now, but we do have other people, and I say that because you brought up the continuance. We had the choices, approve, deny, or continue. So, it's a fair question to request a continuance in this, as we've heard at this time. So, I have Councilmember Millhaven, Councilmember Durham, Councilwoman Janik. Millhaven.
Thank you. And Mayor, I think you make an excellent point to say the materials we have here are dated. There have been significant changes to the project. I have been, while I don't always agree with my colleagues, I've been impressed with their willingness to be thoughtful and hear folks out, and, you know, I'm looking through the packet materials, and we had PowerPoints with things crossed out that showed significant changes to the height and the density of the project. I think all of that is exactly why we need to provide a continuance. We're going to, if we don't continue this item, we're going to be making a decision on a project we don't have the details on, and so I'm going to make a motion that we continue this item for at least 30 days. Thank you.
Second, but I'd like to speak in my turn as well.
Okay. Please go ahead, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Capooty, speak to your second, and then we'll vote on that.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, pardon me for the interruption. The Executive Director for McCormick Ranch is here. If she could just speak to the continuance, that would be helpful on our end.
I was going to allow for that, and I was going to call her up myself, but then we got another motion to continue. So, you know, we still, we're still pressing on this when we have other people that want to be able to weigh in, and I think I said that, I would be glad to defer to get some explanation from the Association. But again, I'm having to vote on a continuance motion.
Okay. Actually, I'd love to hear Ms. Alrick speak if she would like to. That would help.
So, you would, would you like to remove your continuance, second, or, because there's other people that still want to talk about the presentation.
I still want to talk about the presentation in general, but I would, you know what, I would rather hear what we're here to hear before I talk more.
The subject is a continuance. That's the motion. So, the person that's speaking will only speak to the continuance subject.
That's fine. Yes, because of course, any comment that we make on...
And therefore, our discussion shouldn't go off into traffic or...
Sure. Let's hear a little more information about the continuance. That would help us make a better decision. I agree.
Well, I call the question. Let's just vote on the continuance, up or down, and then we can proceed with the presentation as it should be. The motion was to continue. All in favor?
As a point of order, you may not call the question without a vote of the Council.
No, you can change, you can get, you must call, when you call the question, it requires a vote, and if you want a question...
Okay, so the vote is to call the question. Is that correct?
Okay. So, she's questioning my ability to just call for the vote of the continuance. So, a no vote would mean that Ms. Millhaven's counter to mine suggestion is void. A yes would support Millhaven. All in favor? Record your vote.
Understand what we're voting on.
Wait a second.
She asked for a question. The question, the question is now, has to come for a vote, and I have, okay. City Attorney, proceed. She can clarify that for us.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. If your intent is to call the question, the Council should first vote on whether it's going to call the question, and if the Council votes yes to that, then the Council shall then proceed to vote on the motion to continue.
Thank you. So, I will be voting yes to call the question. Everyone, please record your vote. It carries. Therefore, we will now go to the main motion. Therefore, we will now go to the main motion, which is to continue. And at this point, the no vote, yes vote would continue, a no vote would not continue. Okay, that motion dies a second time.
Mayor.
The first time it was withdrawn. Okay, now, for clarification, we want to continue the presentation, and we have eliminated, one of our choices was to continue the case. Now it's either approve or deny, and that's where we're at. I am asking, I'm asking to give courtesy to the HOA Association to come forward and explain the latest paper position that they have, if that suits them.
Thank you, Mayor Tega and councilmembers. I am Jamie Urick. I am the executive director for McCormick Ranch, and I also serve on the Architectural Review Committee, which is incorporated to make decisions on the McCormick Ranch Center, where this is located. The Architectural Review Committee is separate from the Property Owners Association. They are governed by separate restrictions. The original submittal that came in mid-2021 had some real problems. The use changes, the density, the lot combined, just a lot of things that he wanted, we didn't want. We denied it multiple times for the change in use. We denied it. There were some amendments that he was asking for as well. I wasn't prepared, I apologize, to speak here tonight.
Development standards, we asked for amended development.
Yes, amended development standards. And we said, we will not approve any amendments. We will not, there was something about the change in use, we said we wouldn't approve any amendments to that either. Where we stand now, and this is what I've tried to relay to the council members that I spoke with, and I apologize if I didn't do that accurately, is that the association, and these letters should be in your packets, I saw them online, so I'm assuming you also have them. We did say that we will approve a change of use, and we would approve the development standards that need to be changed in order for this to happen. We have approved that. What we have not approved, McCormick Ranch has not approved, is the architectural side of it. And that's where you keep seeing these changes. And we've been, a lot of our, some of our members, it's a density issue, but at this point, the association has approved the change in use, and that letter should be in your packets. There was a letter from Scottsdale Ranch, and they had concerns about the change in use, but they don't have a say in this process. Our restrictions are totally separate than theirs. So it did get passed that, but as of now, the project couldn't be built because we have not approved it architecturally. And that's the main point that I have tried to get across when I've spoken. It was too high, it was too dense, it's totally out of character for McCormick Ranch that prides our, you know, prides ourselves and offers our homeowners open space and harmony. And this was completely, what we saw originally was not in harmony. And Kurt did come to our office, Jim's come multiple times. They were not listening to us. I'll tell you that right now. We kept telling him. We put it in writing, clear as day, they were not listening. I have not looked at what he brought in today. He might be listening now. But it makes sense to continue based on the other approvals that they do have. And that's what I think maybe was missed, because those two approvals for change of use and the parcel combined are in your packets. And I don't know if that, I don't know if they're in your packets. I'm speaking like you're my board. They're online. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them. But some of our committee members were against the change of use, but it did pass.
Well, thank you very much. And please stay there, because I know Councilman Durham had a kind of opening question as well, and then Councilwoman Whitehead. If it pertains directly, otherwise, does anyone have a direct question? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you very much. And then we will go to Councilmember Durham and Vice Mayor Kapuri.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, I raised the issue of the development agreement. We've received a number of promises and pledges about how the project is going to operate. And if I understand your answer, there's a private agreement that we're not privy to, or certainly we haven't seen. I haven't seen it, whatever that agreement is. So I'd like you to address that further.
If I could have the Elmo, Mayor, Councilmember Durham. So there's a draft here of a declaration with regards to the commitments we made with regards to the 10% of those units being affordable. Again, you, two previous projects, you've approved greater densities for five units, I think, no, actually, seven units and eight units, so 15 total, two projects. We're bringing forward a proposal that's a private agreement. My understanding is that the city, and we haven't approached the city attorney or staff yet, and we seem to always do that, we seem to put staff in the middle of enforcing an affordable housing issue that really it's not a zoning or a land use issue, and we don't know how to actually enforce it. So what we were committing to is a private declaration that commits the property owner, Scottsdale resident, commits the property owner that's going to run the apartments, Mark Taylor, Scottsdale Company, to commit to this for 10 years. And it's affordable units for specific people that were discussed in the previous two approvals with this council to pinpoint. Then we added something, I think, that I don't think was added in those two previous cases, which everybody within a mile radius that works there, doesn't have to be a nurse, could be the Chompy's Deli guy. It could be anyone that works in that vicinity. They have the ability to utilize this private agreement. We think it's better that we enforce it. We can add a stipulation that we come back to you yearly and demonstrate how we're enforcing it, and penalties if we don't. But putting the city in an enforceable position of affordable housing, we felt that that's not what was what the city wanted. Now, if you want that, we can get on that and create that document. It's very simple. I just think there's an enforceability issue. You'd have to consult with your city attorney to determine whether or not that's the role the city wants to play in creating something that benefits the city and benefits this area. And so again, I don't know of any other projects that done this. I think the first one that came to you, the applicant said, "I hope this generates more people coming forward with this kind of stuff." I think our client took it to the nth degree. So now you guys have a new threshold. And so we're just trying to create that betterment. We're going to create a first-class quality project in Scottsdale. It's a beautiful project. I can go through it if you want. But this document then would hold true to those number of units as a minimum, as a minimum, for the people that work in that area. So that's what we produced. If the council wants to, again, I know you've been denied twice on a continuance. If the council wants to continue, and for us to put this verbiage in a development agreement, we sure can. And we can create something that's acceptable to this council. That's heads and tails above any of the previous approvals you have.
There are other issues which have been covered in our development agreements of late. And for example, Councilmember Whitehead inserted a provision into some previous agreements that would require construction to begin within a stated period. And without a development agreement, I don't think we have any commitment to that effect here, do we?
Mayor and Councilmember Durham, that's a great point. No, you don't have that. I didn't hear that that was a concern with this project. If it is, we'll be happy to provide a development agreement that speaks to that issue. We're raring to go.
Well, I think it's a concern on any project. We are very anxious to see projects move ahead.
And again, Mayor and Councilmember Durham, we'll be happy to put that in any agreement.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kapuri, and then Councilwoman Whitehead.
I'm just sitting up here feeling more and more uncomfortable. We're always told that we're not supposed to negotiate from the dais, and that's sort of what we're doing now. So again, I sort of entered this meeting thinking that we would continue, because we've been given so much information that's new, and it's hard to make a good decision. And if we're forced to make a decision, yes or no, it's probably not going to be the right decision, because as everyone has mentioned up here, we just don't have enough information now. Things are changing as we go. So again, I'm feeling very uncomfortable. I tell people all the time, "I don't know how I'm going to vote until I'm up here," and I mean it. I really don't. I'm literally going back and forth like the devil and angel on my shoulder right now, not sure what I'm going to do. To me, it seems like we have a great project. It, once again, checks all the boxes. It says what we wanted to do in our general plan, in our Shea Character Area Plan, in our city's economic development plan. Again, we have a commercial center that's been unoccupied for years, that's desperate for revitalization, that's starting to collect homeless people. It's an empty parcel. And most importantly, it's next to our largest employers and the freeway, with no other residences anywhere near. As has been pointed out in this council so many times, we have a housing crisis. There's a shortage of every type of housing, houses, apartments, all pricing and income levels. Prices are up. We have the lowest rental vacancy in the century, 4-something percent. So I don't think there's an issue that there's too many apartments by any stretch of the imagination. And we need a variety of housing. Again, that's what we said in our general plan. We're not accessible to new businesses or residents, and we can't retain or attract employers or talent, or maintain and improve the quality of living for our residents, or provide a robust customer base for the small businesses. We have to approve more quality housing across this price spectrum. And most importantly, I just think we can't make public policy, listening to the Nextdoor issues. Of course, we need to listen to our residents, and we're always listening to our residents. We've spent months listening to the residents. But a lot of the information and the opinions we're getting are exaggerations to some degree. And I think, you know, I've had so many conversations with our traffic department, who we're going to hear from tonight, talking about this intersection. Yes, it's at capacity, and as I started to say, this is the most commercial, busy intersection of our city. We have major employers here. Of course, it's going to be busy at rush hour. Our traffic and transportation department is going to present to us tonight all sorts of suggestions for how to relieve some of that rush hour congestion, which is great. We'll move forward. We're not going to stop growing because there's rush hour traffic. Traffic is a good thing for our city to some degree. I mean, that means that we're vibrant and exciting and successful. So our traffic report from tonight actually says that travel demand on most quarters has not grown significantly over the past 20 years, even with continued development and redevelopment. So again, maybe there's a disconnect between the facts and what people feel. I don't know. I think having live-work-play options, of course, is going to decrease traffic, and technology's going to decrease traffic. And we're trying to, you know, alleviate some of these pinch points, which is good. I think, I had a conversation earlier in the week with the city manager, and we talked about a lot of the traffic that's at this intersection is because there's actually no stores. All the way to Fountain Hills, there's no other retail, so everyone's sort of, you know, accumulating in this one place. But these ideas that multifamily housing is going to bring crime and decrease property values, and that the existing stores are going out of business, how many times did we all up here hear, you know, "You're putting Chompy's and Sprouts out of business." I mean, these are the kind of things, we can't make our decisions based on things that aren't facts. I have to just look at the facts. And to me, you know, the facts bear out that this project is necessary for our city. But again, we've got to listen to the folks. The other comment that kept coming before us in a lot of our emails was people being irritated that these aren't affordable units, which I don't even know what to do with that comment. So I think affordable is relative in Scottsdale. Of course, it's affordable for the people who are going to be living and working in that area. Of course, they're going to be, you know, the apartments are not going to be Section 8 low-income housing. They're going to be affordable for the people who work there. If we were, if people are actually asking us to do low-income housing at that intersection, then we'd have to look at a totally different project. I'm sure we'd need much more height and density and lower-quality architectural materials. And then we could probably produce a low-income rental product there, but that's not what we're giving. We're giving a high-quality building that's, again, going to serve a need and be next to a hospital and a freeway. So I'm just, again, I honestly don't know how I'm going to vote. If we can't continue and get more information, I feel at a loss. I think you've brought us a good project. I think you certainly have earned the right to continue on and hear more information, and I'm feeling awfully frustrated up here. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, I see Councilwoman Whitehead, Councilmember Durham. Were you up again? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little confused, because this council has already voted on this project, and it's unusual, I believe, to speak after the vote. And I don't know that there's, I don't know if the procedure allows for another vote. I just want to make a couple comments on this project. The people, I have not been on Nextdoor a single time, but I have talked to hundreds of people through email or via conversation. And I want to talk about traffic, too. So the people that I'm talking to have a very clear idea of what you're asking for, Mr. Riggs. And they don't approve the height and the density. Many don't approve the use. This is a PUD that does have an approved residential component, and they do support that. But, you know, again, I just want to really stress that these are real people. These are not just people who are on Nextdoor, and there's many of these people, and I've been talking to them for over a year. One of the reasons that people don't want this project to be so high and so dense is because of the traffic issue. And the traffic issue is in the book that we're going to discuss next, this Transportation Action Plan. The transportation department is asking us to turn one of our most beautiful pedestrian corridors into a four-lane, frankly, highway. And that's to accommodate, this is a built-out area, but that's to accommodate this higher-density, more growth. So I think what we're looking for is a project that fits the community, and fits the density, and doesn't then justify the need to widen roads that are really beautiful and incredibly well-used. And anybody who has ever taken a walk with their dog, anybody who's ever gone for a bike ride, can tell you the difference between a two-lane road and a four-lane road. Yeah, there's no difference. I don't ride my bike on Thompson Peak, 100th Street, 96th Street, all day long. We don't want to turn Mountain View into a Thompson Peak. So I think these are the issues. These are the issues you've heard. I respect all the effort, and I definitely respect the residents. This is not a Nextdoor decision, so thank you.
Okay. I am going to make a motion, but I also want to explain something ahead of time. And when we sat Mr. Riggs and with Kurt Jones, and people would feel us out and see where our push points were, and what we felt as representatives of the city and council, what were we looking for? And I kept saying it repeatedly, 25 units per acre is my max. And you always wanted to exceed that. I always said, having housing near the hospital is great. We can agree about that. I always said that having a street light there is safer, and I see that as a benefit. But what's happened is, it kept getting pushed and pushed and pushed further away by higher density, and I'm only one vote up here, but I'm saying it is that clash between what McCormick Ranch was designed to be and actually the low-profile situation that Scottsdale wants to, is designed as, versus the, let's ask for 60 units an acre, 50, or 80. Other people have asked for many more. And then the trick of annexing more property onto this property to make it look as though there was commercial use. I disagree with commercial use being eroded for apartments. I say that. It's a national shortage of apartments. It's not just on me as a council, as mayor and council. It's a national shortage. Why is it a shortage? Because housing is too expensive, in spite of low. Because housing is too expensive in spite of low-interest rates. The entry level is so difficult, that doesn't make it right. That doesn't make it, there are, there is some gouging going on in some of these rental market rates that make it attractive for investors. So when it comes down to it, where you have come, in my mind, was a long way, but still, you never, and then, and then I quote the general plan, saying 25 is cap on high-density. The people voted on that with the general plan. Before we had the general plan, 2035, anybody could say, "Well, there's no cap, just above eight units." That's all it says in the old general plan of 2001. Well, I have to respect that we have a guideline, and if there's anything to carry forward, it's not building on something that was broken and had to be repatched together. For that reason, I think we can give guidance to help, but I move that this project be denied. The way it is is not acceptable, having it open-ended, and I have tried, and I have spoken with you guys, and I'm still, I'm still hearing, "Oh, we're going to do 36 units if we add on some more property per acre," or something like that, or 33. I don't know how to get there with you. And it's, again, the conflict with what McCormick Ranch expects versus the higher formula. Now, I'm a free-market person, too, but every time you give a subsidy to one, it just raises the rent to somebody else. So that's where this becomes a problem, where your land basis has to be blended correctly, not for 60 units an acre, or 50, or 38, or now I think it's 33 or 34, and it keeps getting chipped and chipped. I saw this on Green Belt, where they got excessive number of density, that's why I voted against it. So we have to set the rules. The rules, I think, can flow better for a positive outcome. That's my motion, to deny the case and let them start, go forward with other criteria that they've gained.
Mr. Mayor, before you call the vote, we would appreciate that you would accept our withdrawal of the case.
We do. We accept that.
Thank you very much.